Ladies and gentlemen, before we call our meeting to order, we're going to start tonight's actions with item one, which is our invocation will be led tonight by Dr. Martin Knox, who is the Senior Pastor of Lake Shore Drive Baptist Church. No reference to age, right Pastor?
Correct.
Okay, please lead us in prayer, sir.
Absolutely. Join me in prayer, please. Dear God, it is our privilege to be able to call out to you, the Almighty One. And Lord, in the scriptures that you have given to us, you have told us that we are to pray for our government leaders. And Father, we are mindful of that responsibility and we realize in the times in which we live, that our need to pray for them is certainly there and present, and they need us to pray for them. And so, Father, tonight, not to just have a perfunctory prayer before we begin meetings, but Father, to lift these leaders of our city to you. Lord, leaders that need to understand a variety of things. There's a lot of matters before them, and Father, many times, they're trying to wrap their minds around what's going on and have knowledge and understanding. And so, Father, we pray that you would provide that and put all the right people in places to know what they need to know. Lord, that with that knowledge, there would be discernment, understanding of what needs to be done, actions that need to be taken, difficult decisions that need to be made. And Father, that they would take all of that and apply that to the situations that they encounter. And Father, provide wisdom for our city. Lord, that you would grant that to each of them. And Father, we realize that many times collectively, we are better than any of us are individually. And so, we thank you for the team of leaders that our city has. And Lord, that you would allow them to work together in unity and harmony and helping one another. Doesn't mean they always agree on every matter, but that they would help each other to find the best solution and the best answer for everyone involved. And Lord, that they would do so in a way that sets a good example for how do we conduct ourselves for the best of our city? How do we conduct ourselves with civil discourse and pleasant manners in which we discuss sometimes very personal matters, passionate moments, that they would do it well? We ask this in your name. Amen.
Yeah. Dr. Knox, thank you, sir. Please come back and see us soon. Item two on the agenda is to call the meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum present. The meeting is in session at this time. We do all have all members present tonight. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Councilman Cleveland, do you mind, sir?
If you guys would stand and join me for a pledge to the U.S. and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the U.S., one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for that, sir. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hotop?
I have none.
Counsel. Item five on the agenda is presentations and proclamations. We're going to have two of those this evening. Five A is to recognize the local office of the Army National Guard. And five B is to recognize Weatherford Police Department Sergeant Jason Hayes's recent completion of the FBI National Academy. Counsel, would all move down the front, please? Mayor Protem. He told me to hit the button and I forgot. Mayor Protem is going to lead us in the recognition.
The 840th Mobile Augmentation Company was established as a part of the 111th Engineer Battalion in 2007. Since then, the unit has deployed to designated contingency areas of operation to provide combat support and assure mobility for combined arms. In 2009, the 840th deployed to Iraq with the mission of detain operations and personal security escorts. After the unit's overseas deployment, they have been involved in multiple state-side missions aiding communities during natural disasters. They have been activated for disasters such as floods in Orange County, Texas, ice storms in Wichita Falls, and Hurricane Harvey in Houston. To stay constantly prepared, the 840th has engaged in multiple large-scale training exercises. The unit has been to the Joint Reserve Training Center in Germany, the JRTC in Louisiana, the National Training Center in California twice, and has multiple evaluations in Fort Hood, Texas. The unit has taken their knowledge overseas to train Czech military forces on combat engineer skills. They have sharpened their skills in areas of combined arm breaches and counter-mobility operations. Recently, the unit has been prepared as been part of a high-tempo experimental program to where select Army National Guard units are attached to the Army Brigade Active Duty Unit. For three years, the 840th has been attached to the 62nd Engineer Brigade through a pilot program. After building a strong relationship with the brigade, the 840th has recently switched back to their organic 176th Engineers Patch. I had the honor and privilege of being invited to their patchover ceremony, and I just want to say, this group of young men and women who defend our country, who defend us, are just phenomenal people, and we are so fortunate as a city council and as a city of Weatherford to have these young men here with us. And I want to just say to you, thank you very much for everything that you do for us.
I just want to, I'm Dylan Horn. I'm the company commander down the street here at the 840th MAC. I just want to thank everybody, Ms. Wilder, Mayor Pascal, city council members. Thank you guys for recognizing these soldiers and working with us so much. I'm going to let my commander say a few things, but just continued support from you guys is much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Just real quick brief words. I am the 111th Commander. I just want to let you know, they were actually recently recognized to be the top company in the entire state of Texas for engineering, and they're going to the national competition in February. And I think they have a real good chance to be the top engineering company in the entire nation. So, hey, congratulations to you all. I appreciate it. As far as community relations go, I hope this is just the first day that we can, we started this relationship. These are citizen soldiers. Most of these individuals are from the city, and they grew up here and they live here. They are, they are, they are the citizens that are ingrained in the community every day. You don't see them in uniforms. But these individuals are those that, that go to school, they continue the relationships here. So, but on that note, this is one of our battalion coins, and we have five certificates of appreciation for these five individuals here. First of all, Ms. Wilder, we can, we want to be here without you, and we appreciate this relationship that we have. Thank you. You, sir, for having us today. We're very honored to be here. It's a great privilege. These certificates are just a token of our appreciation. Heart is on the back. I won't take any more of your time. You have much more important things to do. But on behalf of the Adjutant General for the Texas Army National Guard and the Texas Military Department, we thank you for being members of your community, and we hope to have a Now, we're honored to be members.
One last recognition for this fine group of men and women. Commander, thank you so much. You traveled up from Austin this evening to be with us, so safe travels home, sir. Thank you all very much. Now for another very special recognition. Deputy Police Chief Chris Crawford is here to recognize Sergeant Jason Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant Hayes, if you'll come up. Just want to say a few brief words. For those of you that don't know, Sergeant Jason Hayes recently attended the FBI National Academy. The FBI National Academy is a law enforcement executive academy that was started in 1935. So, during its 85-year tenure, there's only been about 53,000 roughly graduates from that academy with over 700,000 active law enforcement officers throughout the country. So, when you look at and you break that down into percentages, less than one-half of 1% of law enforcement executives have the opportunity to attend that academy. A 10-week-long process. There's a lot of vetting that takes place prior to it to even qualify, both physically and academically. There's a lot of challenges as he works your way through that 10-week program. It's in Quantico, Virginia, so he's away from his family for 10 weeks while he's working through that particular program. And it's an extremely rewarding executive management school that we know that Jason is going to bring that knowledge back to not only be, improve his management skills, but he's going to use that, that information to build a stronger community for us here in Weatherford. So, we want to congratulate Jason for completing that academy. Again, it was a rigorous process, but we thank you for your commitment to that academy and to the law enforcement department
Sergeant Hayes, would you like to introduce your family briefly?
I've got my, my father here, who's retired State Game Warden, Randy Hayes. My mom, Darlene Hayes, retired nurse. My wife, Michelle Hayes, and my daughter Elliot Hayes. They're here.
You know, we talk all the time about building a strong community, and these two recognitions of this group of people outside and people like Sergeant Hayes, there's no finer definition of what building a strong community is all about. And to Sergeant Hayes's family, thank you for letting him be gone that long. For the families that are with these men and women in the military out there, thank you for your dedication and sacrifice. Thanks for being a part of our strong community. Safe travels home, Commander. Item six on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Six A is consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on January the 14th of 2020. Any discussion on the item before we call for a motion? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion at this time. Motion for approval by Councilman Cleveland, a second by the Mayor Protem. Any discussion before we call for a vote? Call for a vote this time on six A. Indicate yea or nay, please, on your screens at this time. That passes unanimously. Item seven is consent agenda items. We can hear these as a group or separate. Seven A is discussed and considered adoption of resolution R2020-02, amending the City of Weatherford Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. Seven B is considered adoption of resolution R2020-01, ordering the May 2nd, 2020 general election places one and two, authorizing the mayor to execute the notice of general election, and authorizing the mayor to contract with the Parker County Elections Administrator to administer early, early and election day voting. Seven C is conduct the final review of the Economic Development Incentive Program and Consider Adoption of Resolution R2020-04, adopting the 2020 Economic Development Incentive Policy, which includes an amendment pertaining to development standards. Counsel, do you wish to split any of these off individually? Indicate a motion at this time to approve consent items. There is a motion by Jeff Robinson and a second for Curtis Tucker for approval. Any discussion on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time on the consent items. Indicate yea or nay, please. Consent items pass unanimously. Item eight is public hearings. Eight A is hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number O2020-06 for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage and display accessory to retail use in the C1 Commercial Zoning District at 411 South Main Street, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH2019-0026. Welcome, Mr. Ketner.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. You have in your packets the complete staff report of this, this request for a conditional use permit. As most of you are aware, Gibson's at 411 South Main is, is one of our longest businesses that have been in our community. And as such, we're, as, as part of our efforts in, in corridor cleanup, they, we wanted to codify what they, the use of their property as required by the current regulations. And they also had some plans that they wanted to do some expansions on, on their property and uses. And so, all of that is outlined in your, in your staff report, and was approved and, and reviewed by the Planning Commission at their January 8th meeting and voted unanimously 5-0 to recommend approval of the conditions of the conditional use permit for this request. One of the things that did come up, just for, for your information, is, is during that public hearing, a request came up from the public in regards to the fence in the rear of the property for the containment of the, the items in the back area. The applicant met with the residents after the meeting, and we visited with the applicant, and the applicant's intent is to, because he's going to be storing items, larger items, and, and having a forklift coming back and forth. At the inside of that fence will be of, of sturdy materials, metal, and the outside will be a wood clad fence. So, from the outside, it will be wood. So, I believe they did a good job accommodating the, the needs of the neighborhood. And, and so, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer any.
Counsel, I believe we've got a technical difficulty going on this time. I'm going to ask Mr. Ketner before we take questions and start a public hearing. I'm going to take, we're going to take a brief recess. Our IT folks can look at the screens. We don't, we don't have the ability to vote right now.
Okay.
But we'd like to have them repaired so we can see the visual items and stuff. So, we'll take a brief recess. If y'all give us just a few minutes, we'll be right back Screens. Let's just refer back to the main screen. If we go totally dark here again, we're just going to operate old-school off-paper agenda. Okay? Is it okay, City Secretary?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
We're good.
Mr. Ketner, I apologize, but could you start over?
No problem.
All right. Thank you very much.
As you have in your-
That's a very uncomfortable feeling when your life goes dark right in front of you.
As, as you have in your staff reports, you have the complete application for 411 South Main Street, which is the, known as the Gibson's. And at that location, they're, we're codifying a conditional use permit for their location of their outside storage and display areas, as well as they wanted to add a, a storage area in the back of the property on South Elm Street, as it's shown on their site plan. And, and just to codify those locations for that, there was some discussion at the Planning Commission hearing in regards to the fence for the area located on Elm Street at the back of the building. The applicant met with the residents, and they, they worked out, and we have received confirmation from them that the, they needed it to be durable on the inside because they'll be stacking pallets and other things behind that enclosed area. So, they don't want it subject to so much damage as a wood fence might. But the inside will be a metal and the outside will be a wood fence. And so, in the staff report gives all of the conditions as outlined, as you have in your report. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer any.
Counsel, we do have to have a public hearing on item 8A. Any questions for staff before we have our public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Ketner, for your patience and duplicate presentations. Thank you. We'll have, we'll open a public hearing on item 8A specifically at this time. If there's anybody here who would like to speak specifically on this item, please come forward at this time. 8A. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on item 8A. Any questions or anything for staff? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion on 8A. Could you please state it verbally?
I make a motion that we approve this ordinance with the exhibits that are listed and the conditions listed in the ordinance.
Motion by the Mayor Protem for approval with conditions as stated. Is there a second?
As stated in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Curtis Tucker. Any discussion on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on item 8A at this time. If you'd indicate yea or nay with the, how do you want to do this?
I'm sorry?
Still have the ability to vote? Okay.
Yes, sir.
We're still going to be able to have the ability to vote on your touchscreens. Indicate yea or nay at this time, please. 8A passes unanimously. Eight B on the agenda is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance 02020-07 for a zoning district change from C1 Commercial to R1 One Family Residential at 106 Harmon Street, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH2019-0027. Welcome back, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is a request for rezoning from C1 Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential at 106 Harmon Street. This went before the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 8th and was voted unanimously for approval. You have the complete staff report in your packet and the ordinance for this request. There was only one concern that was brought up at the public hearing. It had to do with drainage. However, because this is a vacant lot, as, as it's developed, those concerns about the drainage will be addressed at that time.
Any questions for Mr. Ketner before we have a public hearing? Hearing none at this time. We'll open a public hearing on item 8B. We do have one speaker card, but before accepting that or calling that person forward, is there anybody just on the floor that'd like to speak related to item 8B specifically? Hearing none. We do have a speaker card from Mr. Darwin Yury. Mr. Yury, how are you tonight, sir?
Good.
Good. Once you get settled up here, if we can have your name and address, then you'll have three minutes, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
City Manager, Counsel, Darwin Yury. I live at 110 Harmon Street in Weatherford, and the property in question here was just across the creek from where we live. And it's a creek that is, has a concrete bottom in it with rock and cement on the sides. And on the 106 side, which is in question with this number here, the deterioration of the rock due to out-of-control growth of the neglected flowerbed on the other side has caused, caused a real concern for some of the neighbors and myself. Now, on our side of the creek, our rock is intact. There's nothing wrong with them. Their cement, they're fine. But on the 106 side, there is a risk of, of the wall collapsing and then causing possible stop-up of the storm drain down the hill where two other houses are. So, that is what I wanted to talk about. And the gentleman just said that there was a drainage issue, and that's what it was. So-
Mr. Yury, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience with us. Anybody else on 8B? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions, comments before we call for a motion on the item? Hearing none, we'll call for a verbal motion, please. If that's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion for approval by Councilman Cleveland, second by Councilman Tucker. Any discussion on that before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time on 8B. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes unanimously. Eight C on the agenda is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance O2020-08 for a conditional use permit for outdoor storage and display accessory to retail use in the C1 Commercial Zoning District at 1817 South Main Street, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH2019-0028. Welcome back.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, you have before you this case is a request for a conditional use permit for the outside storage and display areas, also known as tractor supply facilities here in town. And this went before the Planning Commission at their January 8th meeting, and they voted unanimously 5-0 to recommend approval with the conditions as outlined. This also is part of our corridor notification with businesses. And, and working with the businesses, they've outlined their areas of requests for storage and gone through the conditional use permit. And the request is before you, and it was unanimous with the Planning Commission of approval.
Questions for Mr. Ketner before we have a public hearing? Eight C. Anybody? All righty. Thank you, sir. This time we'll have a public hearing on item 8C specifically. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Eight C. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on item 8C. Counsel, any questions? Call for a motion if you don't mind doing it verbally.
Motion to approve with the three listed conditions.
Motion by Councilman Cleveland for approval with the three listed conditions. Or here a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion on item 8C before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at 8C at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Eight C passes unanimously. Eight D on the agenda is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number O2020-09 for a zoning district change from C1 Commercial to R1 One Family Residential at 115 East Ackard Avenue, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH2019-0029.
Yes.
You're slow tonight, right?
All right.
All right.
We have before you, this is a rezoning request at 115 Ackard, rezoning from C1 Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential. And the request is, this is being used as a house. This went before the Planning Commission. You have the complete staff report in your packet, and it went before them on January 8th and was voted unanimously to rezone the property.
Great. Questions for Mr. Ketner before we have a public hearing? Thank you, sir. Open the public hearing at this time on item 8D. Is there anybody who'd like to speak specifically related to this item? We do have two speaker cards, but I'll open up to the floor first. Eight D. Okay, speaker cards. First, Lauren Moncrief. Ms. Moncrief, would you like to come forward? Thank you for being here. And once you get settled, if we can have your name and address for the record, and then we'll have three minutes, okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Lauren Moncrief, and I live at 115 East Ackard. Just recently moved in. Very happy to have done so and have joined the city. I'm simply here to support the motion that's been put before you, which was, as was already described, unanimously voted in favor of during the January 8th Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is the first time I've done this, so pardon me if I'm stumbling a little bit.
Well, you're doing great.
Simply that I had looked to, I came up and visited about a year and a half ago and discovered the city, fell in love with it. Very much looking forward to having a long life, hoping to retire here. And obviously, from a personal residence perspective, the considerations that are associated with that long-term, I know that with a C1, there are certain restrictions in terms of if anything ever happened to the house, being able to rebuild it. So, from a mortgage and a insurance and a security and, and life planning perspective, that's the basis for my request. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for being here. Welcome to Weatherford. We're in love with it, too. Thank you, Ms. Moncrief. Second, second and final speaker card is Darwin Yury. Mr. Yury? Welcome back, sir. If you can have your name and address again for this specific item, and then we'll give you three minutes, okay?
110 Harmon Street, Weatherford. Is this the 115 East Ackard?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There was a severely disabled respondent came, five people came to the last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and this lady was severely disabled. And I'm wondering if her request in this 115 East Ackard Street was, was listened to and honored? And that was my, that's just my question.
Thank you for stating your concern, Mr. Yury. Anybody else from the floor on 8D? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Mr. Ketner, anybody have staff questions?
Yeah, just to, just to address that concern, there was a couple of questions. They had to do with properties adjacent to this rezoning request and those, those concerns about the drainage and- about the drainage and water lines, sewer lines, and those things were turned over to staff to investigate and see if there was an actual concern there that needed to be addressed. And so they were given to the appropriate departments to investigate.
Thank you for addressing those, sir. Appreciate that. We'll entertain a verbal motion at this time on item 8D, if that's your pleasure, Counsel.
I make a motion we approve ordinance 2020-09.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by the Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilman Tucker. Any discussion on that item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time on 8D. Indicate yea or nay, please. 8D passes unanimously. 8E is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance O 2020-10 for a conditional use permit for a public utility water storage facility in the AG Agricultural Zoning District at 1208 Newport Road, being 3.164 acres, located in the I and GNR Railroad Company survey, abstract number 1819, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2019-0030.
Mayor and Counsel, this is a conditional use permit request on behalf of the city for our location for a water tower. This went before the Planning Commission at their January 8th meeting and was voted 4 to 1 to recommend approval of this location for the conditional use permit. You have the complete packet and in your, in your report as well. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those. There were several that came to the public hearing and requested consideration in regards to the location. And we had the Engineering and Water Department that explained their process and selection of the location. And they're here to, if you have any questions for them.
Counsel, before we have a public hearing, any questions for Mr. Ketner or any of the other staff members that he might have mentioned, that he mentioned? Okay. Thank you, sir. This time we'll open a public hearing up on item 8E. We do have two individuals that have signed up for speaker cards, but we'll call from the general floor first. Anybody for item 8E? Seeing none. Amy Beerwinkle, Amy, are you still here?
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Once you get settled up here, if you can do me a favor, let us have your name and address and then we'll start the clock at three minutes.
Sure.
Thanks for your patience with us.
No problem. My name is Amy Beerwinkle. I live at 1312 Newport Road. I've only been in Weatherford about a year and a half. And the process for the acquisition of this land and the planning for the water tower is a bit concerning to me because while the final approval for the water tower is before you tonight, our road has already been torn up to lay the water pipe for that water tower down Newport Road. None of the neighbors around it had any idea about the water tower going up before November. And it is my understanding from the zoning meeting on January 8th that the property was purchased and the plan made in January and February of last year. But the only, the way we found out about it was our neighbors at 1302 had their house on the market and had an offer rescinded when the potential buyer found out about the plans for the water tower. That was the first, any people on our street had heard of the city's plan to put a water tower in there. And my, my question, one of my questions is, is this conditional use permit for the water tower only or is it a blanket permit for anything that the city should decide they want to do? Because that is something that was indicated at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, is that there, the reason that tower has to be located precisely where it is, one reason, is because the city might have other plans for the rest of that acreage at some point in the future. So I want to know, is this conditional use permit a blanket for that property or just for the water tower? And if there are future plans, how will our, then our neighbors be notified of that? There is one neighbor, the coal pits, just next to the water tower, who are basically going to be living almost underneath the water tower. And so I just want to know, is there going to be any future notification to the people on our street if the city decides to do other things on the remainder of that property? And my last request, and this may not be the proper form, but I'm going to go ahead and put it out there, because we've been told one of the plans is for there to be aesthetic lighting to light up whatever logos are painted on there, similar to the, the tower is going to look like the one behind QT at I-20 in Bowie. And it's lit up at night. But we would like to ask, as an act of good faith or a concealeratory gesture, that that aesthetic lighting be done away with so that we can maintain a little bit of the peace and darkness of that road that we bought our houses because of the rural feel of that area.
We appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us and appreciate you being here. Thank you, Ms. Beerwinkle. At this time, we have a speaker card, Mr. Darwin Yury. If you can come forward again, sir, and just for the record, once you get settled, if we can have your name and address, and then we'll start the clock at three minutes. Appreciate you being back up tonight.
Darwin Yury, again. I live at 110 Harmon Street, Weatherford. I'm a member of the Parker County Democratic Party. And this last issue that was just spoke about is quite concerning. Now, the respondents that come from the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the last one, this is an issue where they felt like the, the couple that was here before, with the lady, said that the shadow is going to be right on their, their house and, and also that there's a real situation it being just put right across the fence from where they are. I don't know exactly how many feet that is, but you know, the democratic process for them, these people to come down here is to get resolved for these problems like this. Now, if this is going to affect their, the couple that was here last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, if this is going to affect their property values decreasing or nobody want to purchase this or, or even themselves having to put up with looking with that every day, I know I wouldn't like it. And I think there needs to be some buyout or something to satisfy these people to where they can go somewhere else, live somewhere else, or buy somewhere else. But they're going to need help from the city with this. And I appreciate your time and I thank you.
Mr. Yury, thank you again for being here, sir. Anybody else from the floor on 8E? Anybody? Mr. Ketner? Counsel, any questions for Mr. Ketner on item 8E or Engineering Staff? Hearing none, we'll call for a verbal motion, if that's your pleasure, on item 8E.
Mayor, if you, if you would like, the one comment in regards to blanket anything else that possibly could go up there is, is that, no, this conditional use permit is for the tower only and that any other use of the property would go through the appropriate channels through zoning and if required and proper notice would be given.
Hence the reason it says public utility water storage would limit it to that activity. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you for providing that information. Anything follow, Counsel? Entertain a verbal motion at this time, if that's your pleasure, on item 8E.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 02020-10 for the conditional use water permit for the public utility water storage facility. Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Robinson. There is a second by Councilman Cleveland. Just the record, I wanted to verify that I did close the public hearing on item 8E. Any discussion on that item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on 8E at this time. 8E passes unanimously. Item 9 on the agenda is regular agenda items. 9A is discuss and consider the appointment of a City Council member to the City Audit Committee. Discussion, thoughts on this? Sorry?
No, you can go ahead and go ahead and appoint somebody. Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, Jessica Doss, Finance Director. The City Audit Committee meets a couple times a year to discuss the audit in detail and any other audit issues that have come up. The committee is comprised of one member of City Council and one member of the, from the Utility Board. Right now, Councilwoman Wilder is on the committee representing the Utility Board, and we do have a vacant position that was held by Councilman Tucker. So tonight, we will be asking for you to consider the appointment of a City Council member to the Audit Committee. I do want to mention that we do have a member from the Utility Board that has expressed interest in joining the committee, which would enable Councilman Wilder to represent the Utility Board. However, it is up to the council as to who you'd like to appoint.
You mean represent the City Council?
I'm sorry, City Council, yes.
So? Restate that one more time, Ms. Doss.
The last part?
Yes.
So we do have a member from the Utility Board that has expressed interest in joining the committee.
Okay.
Which would enable Councilman Wilder to represent City Council on the Audit Committee.
Same role, appointee from a different body.
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, how do you feel about that?
I love the Audit Committee.
Counsel?
Good.
Is this an action item, City Secretary, or can we just verbally like this?
Is that an interest on the Utility Board or a commitment?
I believe people have already spoken to this individual.
Okay. So just want to make sure we don't move somebody and then all of a sudden not have--
Correct. So you need a motion?
Yes.
I believe so.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Heidi Wilder to the Audit Committee representing the City Council. I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Robinson, second by Councilman Tucker. The appointment of Mayor Pro Tem Heidi Wilder to the Audit Committee as a City Council representative.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments on that? Hearing none, we'll take a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. And we appreciate, Ms. Doss, we appreciate your explanation of that process. 9B is consider appointment of a council member to the Weatherford Economic Development Board.
So, Mr. Mayor, the Weatherford Economic Development Board meets on a quarterly basis and has two representatives from the City Council. Currently, it's Councilman Kevin Cleveland and Councilman Curtis Tucker. But as you know, Councilman Curtis Tucker will be residing at the end of February, so we'll need to appoint an additional council representative. So we just ask that you consider one of the current members for that.
This is all Curtis's fault is what you're saying.
Indeed, it is.
Okay.
Blaming on you. I have no problem blaming you.
Counsel, any discussion on this or your recommendations for this position?
I would like to excitedly recommend Jeff Robinson for this Weatherford Economic Development Board.
Before he has a chance to respond, it's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cleveland.
Actually, I punched the button first.
I think I'm as excited about this as Heidi is the Audit Committee.
You can look that out however you want to, City Secretary. How are you going to record that? Motion by Mayor Pro Tem and a second by Curtis Tucker. Any discussion on that item before we make this commitment from Mr. Robinson? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time on 9B. Passes unanimously. Item 10, future agenda items. Mr. Cleveland?
Yes, sir. So I would like for us to reach out to some consultants, maybe Trent Petty or someone, have them come in and present some options to partner or move forward on some airport options for us to kind of consider as a group as far as private partnerships and fundings.
Okay. Could it be considered in a work session format? That'd be satisfactory?
I think that would be a good--
Okay. Counsel, thoughts, questions?
I'd support that.
All righty.
Could we also get an update on the, how the Hotel Convention Center project is moving along?
Tie those two together?
Tie those two together.
Except that we all work with city staff. We'll narrow down two or three data options as soon as possible. Take some time to gather that information up, get that set and established, and then we'll, we'll do that.
Yep.
Is it okay with the Counsel? Staff?
We're good with that.
Appreciate it, Mr. Cleveland. All righty. Item 11 is citizen comments on non-agenda items. From the floor, anybody? Hearing none, we'll go to item 12 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Mayor Pro Tem, quick to the button with the motion for adjournment. Kevin Cleveland with a second. Any discussion before we have our vote for adjournment? Hearing none, we'll vote on that at this time. That passes unanimously. Counsel is adjourned at 7:16 PM. Thank you all for your service.